Okay, we're good to go.
All right, with that, we would need, we'll call open session to order and we would need a motion to approve the open session agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right, our only item up for discussion this evening, and I'll turn this over to Dr. Kane to kind of prep us, but we're here to discuss the situation at Dwellow as it relates to COVID cases and positivity there. So I don't know if that's Jerry or Dr. Kane, I'm sorry, Dr. LeBratt.
No concerns, I will go ahead and start. Thank you all for being here and for assembling so quickly. We have a situation at Dwellow Elementary School, but we also have some positivity numbers that are concerning elsewhere in the district. Specifically, we have a number of elementary schools that are of concern. We shared information yesterday with the Board of Education and included that in the update for the board packet. Dr. LeBratt has also provided a timely update of what is in fact going on in terms of the numbers, the positivity that we're seeing in buildings across the district. Late this after, middle of the afternoon, St. Charles County Department of Public Health actually sent a recommendation as relates to what we should be doing at Dwellow in the short term, which is to mask the building. And I believe we need to do so starting tomorrow to mask the building in order to get things calmed down as much as possible at Dwellow Elementary School. So that is definitely a part of the conversation that we need to have this evening. I will still say this as relates to masks. It is our strongest deterrent to the challenges that we are facing, and it is something that should be considered by this board, not just for Dwellow, but for other buildings in great spans in the Wentzville School District. It is our strongest deterrent.
Can you please repeat that in and out?
Masking.
Please repeat that.
Sure, masking is a deterrent. It is a preventative measure that we should be considering across the buildings in the Wentzville School District. It is hands down what is going to keep kids in school, and that is our primary driver, is to keep every student that we possibly can in school in the Wentzville School District. And so, I want to say that upfront, we'll have more conversation about some other pieces after Dr. LeBratt provides an update of where numbers stand, where they are shaking out as well. Know that there has been a lag. I'm sorry, Director Garber, go ahead. I think she's frozen for now. As I transition to Dr. LeBratt, we've provided an update of data, again today even versus yesterday, just to speak to how fluid the situation is. We are currently dealing with the lag as relates to contact tracing. We are working through those challenges, but to be very frank and blunt, what we are currently doing is not an effective strategy long-term as relates to contact tracing. There's too much lag and it's leading to other more daunting challenges that we're having to work our way through as well. So, we'll talk about that as well. Jerry, Dr. LeBratt, please walk us through the numbers as they at least existed earlier today.
Absolutely, thank you guys so much again for coming together tonight to discuss these numbers. We first gave you numbers yesterday, and then I worked today to update those numbers. I'm also going to display and share those right now for you so that we can see what we're discussing. So if you'll give me just a second to display. All right, so hopefully you guys can see that right now, let me switch into present mode, you may be able to see a little bit better even. There we go. All right, if you're looking at this data, it shows emergency board meeting update for today, and it's a data update. This data was captured as of 2:15 PM today. You were provided data yesterday as of 3:30 PM. If you notice, I have each typical building down this left-hand side, I have a total enrollment, a virtual enrollment, and a total in-person enrollment. Because we're looking at where are our thresholds at 1%, 3%, and 5% based on our students who are in person. Because there are recommendations from St. Charles County based on the percent of students who are positive who go to that building each and every day. If you notice in red, I have Dwellow. Dwellow was above 5% yesterday, percent positive on 9.8. There were 37 students who we had submitted to county health at that point in time, and that means 5.62% of their student population was in fact positive. Please note that this is not a positivity rate based on students who are testing, this is of the whole entire student body. So 37 of their students are, were positive as of yesterday. Today, that was 43, and I do believe we received another one who had tested positive right as we were coming into this meeting. And we're also sitting on about two to three more that we know are positive, that we have not begun processing yet because we learned that end of the day. So Dwellow was in red because they are at over 5%, which is a threshold for the county to consider closing different buildings if that were the case. And that's not, that's not what county is recommended at this point, but it is something to watch. Additionally, I wanted to make sure, because Dwellow did go pretty quickly, and I can show you that in the next slide, so I wanted to make sure that we highlighted any other schools that we felt could be in danger of increasing rapidly. Anything that's above 1%, I put in orange. You'll notice Boone Trail is in full orange, Wabash is in full orange, Heritage Primary is in full orange. You'll notice that Crossroads went from yellow yesterday, which was between 3/4 of a percent and a whole percent, to orange today, which is over 1%. And Green Tree went from not even noticeable yesterday to 1.2% today. I'm sorry, Director Garber, you were cutting out and I wasn't able to hear. I will keep going and then pause at the end to see if it clears up by then. You'll also notice that, like I said, I highlighted in yellow, some of those were that were between 3/4 and 1% as well. Holt High School, Liberty High School, South Middle School. As we move forward in this data, I've extricated Dwellow for you so that you can see how quickly and rapidly the situation occurred. So week one of school, it was a four-day week, we had no positives. Week two, on Monday, when we returned, we had one positive. The following day, we had seven more for a total of eight. By the end of that week, they had added on, and we were at 18 positives. After Labor Day weekend, we came back, we were at a total of 27 positives, which was 4.1%, and that's the number that we had already submitted to county health, and we had several other in the queue that were being ready to be submitted. Yesterday, we added 10 more for a total of 37, then we were at 43. And we know we have at least three other cases in progress that are positive, that have not yet been submitted to county health, for a total of 46 cases, or that 6.99% of the student population at Dwellow is currently COVID-positive. We have, in addition to those 46 students, we have seven students who are currently have tests pending, or they're waiting access to a test and waiting for their results as well. So we could be as high as seven additional. That is the Dwellow data, and you can see how quickly those numbers grew from 1% to that 6.99%. Just so that we have an idea, and we don't want, we don't want buildings to sneak up and be faster and become rapidly red without us being aware, so we just wanted to kind of put them on our radar. So this next screen I'll share with you just gives, it's kind of a watch list, the buildings to watch. Dwellow, Wabash, Boone Trail, Green Tree, Heritage Primary, and Crossroads are all over 1%. Wabash and Heritage Primary have kind of been on our radar.
Director Garber, can you mute? We have a lot of background noise. Yeah, hold on.
Mute her line.
Yes, are you able to mute? Are you able to mute her?
Hold on. Excuse me, President Bates? Director Garber? Do you have your phone attached as well as your computer?
All right, I think we're at a good spot. So as we were saying, Dwellow's in the red. Wabash and Heritage Primary, we have been kind of watching for a while, and while they're orange, they're a fairly steady orange adding a couple a day. More concerningly, it are Boone Trail, Crossroads, and especially Green Tree, as they have people who have done adding cases particularly Green Tree. We went from 0.7% to 1.26% and almost doubled their number of cases in one day. So just, again, they're not anywhere in the same realm as Dwellow, but just something to note and keep on the radar as we move forward and watch that trend data. But these are the data points as a result to Dwellow, and in the event that you had any questions about where other buildings lie, this is their data as well, and the six hotspots that we've looked at most recently.
I'll just start talking and then we can open the door for any questions that the board may have. What we are trying to do is be proactive as we are seeing positivity beginning to ramp itself up. So what we'd like to do and recommend is that we actually have a situation where if a building is reaching 2% positivity, we're putting masks on. Again, our ultimate drive is to keep kids in school, is to absolutely keep kids in school. As you can see at Dwellow, you saw how quickly from Thursday to that Tuesday, how quickly you jumped, we jumped from 2.28% to over 4%. It happens very, very quickly. So the sooner we're able to control things and keep things as tapped down as possible, the better off we are going to be. At this point, we want to recommend that Dwellow be wearing masks starting tomorrow for students and staff for an entire month. And we continue to monitor conditions. As you can see, the numbers are very high at Dwellow. We want to monitor conditions, but we want to keep school doors open as much as possible. We don't want to be in a situation where we're having to close school doors, but we want to monitor, monitor those conditions so that if necessary, we step in and do something, something else. Also at Dwellow, and we're going to be looking at extending this to other buildings, really it's beginning to roll back some pieces. For example, visitors in cafeterias, I'm sorry, visitors in schools. Parents being in, joining their children at lunch. For now, we've got to put a pause on some of these other pieces, and we have to begin to protect concentric circles. That interaction in terms of what's happening with kids and with teachers in classrooms, that has to be our top priority. So we begin to pause other activities in the building in the short term to keep that up and going. For now, we need to pod specials at Dwellow, and even with recess, begin to look at shifting back to zones in terms of play spaces for students that we begin to zone and cohort some of that as well. So those, those are two other pieces that we want to engage in. And then lastly, contact tracing is something that we're going to have to do differently. We need to start with Dwellow, but also work our way across the district. We have to eliminate the gap as relates to the data and how it is coming in, and we will work with county health and begin to assert a different, a different position as relates to contact tracing. But what we're doing right now is creating too much of a lag for us to be effective and to be effective in terms of contacting families and students if we are in fact seeing something, and we're only making the spread worse at this particular point in time. Those are major takeaways at this point. At this point, we'd be happy to answer any questions, address any questions you may have.
President Bates, if I could lead off?
Absolutely, Secretary Shaper.
My question is, is it true what I hear on the, the trade-off on this a little bit can be if all students are masked, then we will, our quarantine numbers will go down? If they're zero to three feet, they will be modified quarantine? I guess the, I'm asking, is this a gain for using the mask, is what I'm asking?
That's a powerful and very appropriate question. Jerry, you have a slide up that really delineates this, you want to discuss it?
Absolutely, yes, that's a great question. Thank you for asking that because this brings to light the opportunity we have to keep our students in school. Not only are we able to keep them healthy, which is a focus, but keeping them in their seats regardless of the situation. So you can see here, if both students are wearing a mask, let's look at close contact, zero to three feet. Masking status, both correctly masked for entire exposure. Then if you are zero to three feet, that means you're shoulder to shoulder, you're pretty close to somebody. You are still allowed to come to school for modified quarantine. That means you can come to school for learning activities only, that's the typical school day in the bus, that is not extracurriculars, that is not Chautauqua, that's not anything outside of school, but you are still able to come to the learning portion of the school day. If both the contact and the positive are masked appropriately the entire time. If you're a close contact of three to six feet, so perhaps your desks are nearby but not right next to each other, and both people are masked appropriately and correctly the entire time, there is no quarantine. It's called a close contact exception. So these students can go about their day normally, they can participate in activities outside of school normally. So there is really a huge incentive to make sure that kids who are in attendance, particularly in these high-risk areas, are in mask, because we can absolutely keep them in school unless they become symptomatic, which is our main goal, is to keep as many kids here as possible. And this was presented at the August board meeting, and is also available on our district website. If you scroll the left-hand side of the page, there's a COVID-19 update button, and then this is under the quick links. This is the shortened version with extended graphics, but we also have a lengthy version with definitions as well.
Yeah, great question. Other question, comment?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Director Garber.
So my question is, what's different from last year? From this standpoint, it doesn't look like there's anything different. We were masked up last year, we still had issues. We still had the very same situation as we do now.
So Director Garber.
I sent an email to you earlier, Dr. Kane, and it was a, and I sent it to you last week, everybody on the board has it. My email to you. So I want to, I would like to hear another proposition here. Because this is exactly what we did last year, I don't see why it's going to change, how it's going to change anything. And it's different is that we're not doing the contact tracing, and I don't know if that's, you know, going to be something, I understand that this, that the county office is required to do this, but if they are overwhelmed, then I don't understand why it isn't shared with the school district. So again, you know, I, I sent off a suggestion about how we could keep the kids separated and yet not punish, and I don't mean to punish, say punish, I didn't mean that. What I mean is that for those children that, and I wanted their children to be unmasked, but we have a situation, but, and I don't know the percentages, nobody's told me what that is, but let's say that 95% of our children are masked, are unmasked. According to the guidelines, what would be the, you would have two people masked in a classroom? None. And that's, I think, one of the biggest things that people are talking about now, is it's the quarantine. There's so many people that have been quarantined because we have the no-mask option. So what is different here from what you're going to say? This is the same thing we did last year.
There's some definitions that are slightly different in terms of what a mask-to-mask contact means in the 21, 22, sorry, 21, yes, the 21, 22 school year versus last year. Dr. LeBratt, you want to revisit those again?
While we did have modified quarantine last year, it wasn't quite as generous in the distance, so we have that zero to three feet mask-to-mask, and we also have the close contact quarantine exception as well. And that is, that is brand new from last year. So that allows students who are between three and six feet, who would have been close contacts last year, to now be not on quarantine at all, as long as they're not symptomatic and had a mask on. So that is brand new, and then they also brought back the modified for those that are zero to three feet and don't qualify for that exception.
To be clear, we do have other options. We could close the doors at Dwellow Elementary School. That is not our recommendation, that is not the recommendation that's from, come from county health. Our primary goal is to keep kids in school, and we're really working to do that as effectively as we can. And Dwellow, it cannot be an option if we're going to keep doors open. We have to mask up for a short term to get things calmed back down, and then we can come back and revisit that conversation. Director Garber, as it relates to your question about contact tracing, as we're going to shift, it will not be seamless. It will be something that we're going to have to work with county health to begin that transition. It's not going to be a seamless overnight situation, but the sooner we get moving on this, the better off we're going to be, so that we can have a firm pulse of what's going on, not only in each building in the Wentzville School District, but for the entirety of the district as well.
Dr. Kane, question for you. So for tonight, would it be appropriate to make a decision directly regarding Dwellow and then not punt down the road, but since we are meeting next week as a full board, could we then revisit, it gives everybody time to think about it, ask any additional questions? Could we revisit the conversation around the threshold, as well as, you know, maybe some opportunities for contact tracing and how we can look at that differently? That gives everybody some time to think about it. Is it possible, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but really just to kind of focus on the decision for Dwellow tonight, and then revisit the discussion when we're all in person next week?
And I do understand we're, we're dumping a lot on you, but conditions are changing very quickly. What I don't want is us staring at a situation on Tuesday where we now have two additional Dwellows today. And I don't know how quickly the numbers are changing, I am concerned at how quickly we are seeing yellow turn to orange, or buildings that weren't even yellow now becoming yellow. And so even if it's a interim situation with the 2% in terms of positivity, even if that's an interim situation, at least gives us a tool to play that, or a tool to use if we have to, if we're seeing something change very quickly.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with an interim, this Jason, I'm fine with an interim-based view on that, but, but certainly a view, that's to your point on a more fine-toothed policy or procedure, I think is appropriate, so not do in haste and spend some time with. You, I think, President, you, you added contact tracing there. My, my belief, so I went to, and Curtis, you know this, I went to Dwellow today, Heritage as well, you know, the, the lag in reporting between contact and letter, if you will, is increased every day. Like, week one was seem fine, people were getting letters at 24, 48 hours, and then it's like, the rails have fallen off. This is the best way to describe it, in some cases, being almost the full length of the quarantine process to which they get a letter. My belief is a lot of what we're seeing, and I think this was echoed by the buildings and that I walked and talked around, a lot of what we're seeing is being caused by that lag. So we're creating a problem because of the, you know, the shift in the contact tracing. You know, my belief, you know, not wait, I don't want to wait to shift in processes as it relates to that. I think, you know, masking for Dwellow, find be it, so be it, but figuring out who should be on quarantine in that building, not in that building under the current guidelines, I think is important now. And, and so, you know, you have my support in addressing that, not just in Dwellow, but in, in all these schools, so that we don't have, to your point, multiple Dwellows.
Director Stoli, did you have a question?
Um, yes, and I, I guess kind of yes. Dr. Kane, are you looking for a motion from this board to change the contact tracing? I mean, if that's something you're looking for, I would like, I would like to make a motion for the Wentzville School District to partner with the Health Department in conducting, in conducting conduct, contact tracing.
To.
So are you making a mo, is that a motion?
Yes.
Why is that just a conversation?
Yes, I'm making that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so now we can open it for discussion. And I guess my first question, and Dr. Kane, I know you might have a comment, is just really in what capacity, right? Because we are partnered today, so how does that motion, what is your intent, how does that look different than what we're doing today?
I will say first and foremost, it's important to note that when we were quote-unquote taking more of a lead role with contact tracing last year, unquote, that was in a mask mandate. And so, contact tracing is going to be stickier if we don't have a mask, a universal mask mandate in place. But to Director Goodson's comments, it is accurate. The lag is causing more of an issue, and so, to eliminate that, we're going to have to take more of a lead role there. We will work with and talk with county health to figure out the particulars of that, but there is space within the motion that Director Stoli provided and has been seconded, I believe, to do just that.
And maybe to the point, maybe Thursday of next week, you come back to what does that look like specifically, but at least allows you to call it air cover or whatever, the, the charge to go, deal with this, you know, specific set of circumstances we have, and then kind of bring the board up to speed maybe next week on what that fulsome look is. Because I mean, look, we, we all recognize that, you know, what we had last year to maybe to Director Garber's point, wasn't great. You know, this, this wasn't a great process either, we had lags as it relates to all of our middle school issues, our high school issues. And, and I think that finding some balance, what, what that looks like exactly, you know, my discretion, you know, that's your discretion, I think, to come back to us on, but, you know, you know, certainly somewhere in the middle, if you will, if there is a middle. Maybe that's what we come back with and talk next Thursday.
Dr. LeBratt, did you have a comment?
I think we've touched on most of those points, just a couple of caveats to note. This is not going to be, while I do think it's important to expedite the contact tracing process and be able to resume more of a normal partnership as we had last year, where we were initiating a lot of that contact tracing, I think it's important to note for the community and for the board that that is not an overnight flip of the switch. There are lots of systems that have to go back into place and do a little bit of retraining, it's a lot for our administrators and our health service team. So know that we can begin that process as soon as we have that motion in that direction, but please know that that's not a fine tune as soon as we open the doors of school tomorrow or even Monday morning. Especially in regard to a mask, without the mask mandate, so there will be some changes that we need to make, there will be more interviews that need to be conducted for those students. And honestly, as far as meeting in the middle, I do feel like the, the format we were just working on was more of a shared partnership, and I think in order to not muddy it too much, I think resorting to a similar system that we had last year is probably the cleanest. We know how to conduct contact tracing, we understand the rules of engagement, and we know that we have a direct line to the St. Charles County Department of Public Health and an epidemiologist if we need it or we have additional questions, and they're always welcome to review any, any work that we conduct or any questions that we have as well. So just wanted to kind of give you a little bit of additional detail on that, from what it looks like from actually conducting that trace and preparing to gear everybody up to do so.
Just one follow-up, Dr. LeBratt was sharing, we've even had a conversation of, let's say there's a situation where there's a tie, where students and family believe there wasn't contact, our process is showing something that looks different. In that case, for example, we turn to county health and say, as the county health department for this county, we need you to weigh in on this particular situation. That would provide a pivot where it's not as much of a, it would provide a very, I think, appropriate pivot for a situation like that, that helps alleviate some pressure and concern. for a situation like that, that helps alleviate some pressure and concern on our end, but also keeps county health in the loop as well.
Do we have, sorry, if I may, do we have the right level of resources to do this again? And if not, can we use Esther funds in order to supplement a need or a flexibility?
Dr. Hector, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, so I don't believe that we, I mean, I'm going to be honest, I don't believe that we do. I don't believe that anybody does, because it takes over the entirety of some people's days. It takes over the entirety of our administrators' days. It takes over the entirety of people in the Health Services Department, our department, and we don't. The unfortunate part is that, and I'm just being very honest, in all pools, it is very difficult to find anybody to work right now. So we can talk about that, we can visit that, but it is, it would not be, again, something that we would just be able to turn around and find somebody to help with that, to be honest. We can look at it.
Dr. Lebratt.
I'd like to add on to what Dr. Hector said. Director Goodson, that's a good question. I think that we could always utilize more resources in this type of thing. We could have utilized more resources last year in this type of thing to be more efficient, more effective, and swift. I think three things that we need to notate are that our numbers and cases are much more significant. So we're already dealing with a higher threshold there. Additionally, with the lack of a mask mandate, the intensity of the questions in the interview process will be much more difficult and intricate, and therefore more time consuming. And then also with staffing. I know that we have some open positions that we're still looking to fill for our Health Services Department. I know that, like Dr. Hector said, it's hard to find subs. It's hard to even find contracting agencies to fill health service positions. So those are all pieces of that puzzle. But we do absolutely know that we need to do something to expedite this process for our community. And we're willing to do what we need to do to help our kids.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote on this motion? Kathy, can you read that motion again?
Yes, please. I want to make sure I have it correct.
Oh, can't hear you, Kathy.
Can you hear me now?
You're real quiet.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, much better.
Sorry. All right. Director Stoli made a motion to partner with the St. Charles County Department of Public Health, excuse me, for the Wentzville School District to partner with the St. Charles County Department of Public Health for quarantine tracing. Is that correct, Director Stoli?
Would be contact tracing? Director Stoli?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I can't see everybody. All right. So a motion and a second. Any other comment before we vote on this motion?
This is Sandy Garber.
Yeah, we're really struggling to hear you. You have a lot of background noise. Do you, by chance, have your phone and your computer? You have to mute one.
I continue to lose the meeting and period. So I've just signed on. And I've muted my phone, so I don't know what more I'm supposed to be able to do on this. Because I.
We can hear you now.
All of the motion, I didn't hear all of the comments. And I had a question.
Okay, what's your question? We can hear you.
Okay, so my question is, wait a minute, let me turn this back up. So what I'd like to know is we are the first person before St. Charles County Health Department. We're the first people that know that we have an issue with a person, right? So I'd like somehow to be able to cut through all the red tape and get everything done. And then you can tell the, you can tell the Health Department as we go along. But I mean, I thought this was such a big emergency, but yet if we're going to wait till we can do certain things and coordinate some efforts, we already did this. We already know what we're supposed to be doing in the first place. Did you hear me?
Director Garber, I would say we're addressing multiple fronts at the same time. One of which is contact tracing, the sequence, the degree of involvement, what that's going to look like, and how that contextually is different this year than last year. And the fact that it will take some time to make the transition, but we're moving toward a transition. That's one piece. And as I understand, that is really the heart of Director Stoli's motion. The secondary or tertiary conversation is around what we're going to do as it relates to Dwellow Elementary School, preference being starting tomorrow as relates to masking. And then the tertiary conversation would be if we have other buildings and we see that trouble is coming, at least in the interim, what process do we put in place to make a shift for that building, if in fact, that's where we need to go?
Director Shaper, did you have a question?
Yes, President Bates, I presume you're going to do a roll call on this. Would that be correct?
I can do that. All right. Any other comments before we vote? All right, Kathy, can you do a roll call vote for us?
Yes, I can. Director Goodson?
Hi.
Vice President Bryce?
Aye.
Director Abbott?
Aye.
President Bates?
Aye.
Director Garber?
Nay.
Director Stoli?
Aye.
And Secretary Shaper?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Do we need a motion on the Dwellow mask requirement?
Yes, we do.
Dr. Kane, okay. I make a motion to require masks in Dwellow starting tomorrow for the next two weeks.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second the drive to vote.
Okay. So just to clarify, that was two weeks, right? And Dr. Kane, the recommendation, I just want to make sure I was clear. The recommendation was for 30 days?
That is correct.
No, I didn't capture that. Can make an amendment. I'm fine with 30 days.
A friendly amendment? Okay. So friendly amendment to the motion, Kathy. All right.
Thank you. May I repeat the motion?
Yes, please.
Director Goodson made a motion that we, that WSD requires masks at Dwellow Elementary for the next 30 days. Secretary Shaper seconded.
Director Garber, did you have a question? We're open for discussion. You might be on mute. We can't hear you.
Oh, I have a question that I mentioned earlier about other options.
Can we put that, I mean, we can bring that up on the next, we meet on Thursday.
You're asking, but you're asking for a vote tonight. You're not asking for a vote next week. You're asking for a vote tonight. So before I vote on anything, I'd like to know, are there any other options? I mean, I tossed one out. You all read it. I don't understand what part of getting an answer, what's so difficult about getting an answer. So I hope you all read the email, because we already know a lot more this year about this COVID. We know a lot more about it than what we did last year. I think we're, I think we're not paying attention to some of the new things that are coming about. And as I said in my email, if hospitals can divide up wings, our schools are about the same size as some of the hospitals. We can't, and I don't understand, here we are, we're going to mask everybody at this point in time, which is what we did last year. That didn't stop it.
I think the point in masking, the point in masking is to keep the kids in school that are under modified quarantine. It's to keep the kids in school in-person learning.
I understand that, Erin. The problem is, is that, you know what, we did that last year. Do we keep all the kids in school? No. We opened up school with masks. We were in school for a whole month. We had them down till January, December and January.
Director Shaper, or sorry, Director Garber, you're cutting out really, really bad. We're not able to hear you.
I had those people that were hustlers percent of the time. I just think that we're going to be doing more harm than we are good. What are you asking for now, tonight? You want us to take a vote to up all the kids for 30? How about if we just mask them a week? Why do we have so 30 days?
Also, I have a question. I have a question, Dr. Kane. We had talked about that threshold potentially, and we may be talking about that next, but if we're looking at over 2% masking in the interim, and I know we'll come back to that conversation, but would, you know, we've said 30 days, but if that threshold fell at Dwellow under that 2% mark, is that something we'd consider revising, right? Instead of that blanket 30 days, is that something we would consider looking at? Or are you more comfortable with that 30-day timeline to try and, you know, mitigate some of that spread? Just trying to understand if that's interchangeable, or if?
I would assume that even the numbers that Dr. Lebratt shared today are likely to creep up at Dwellow. And so I'm trying to, I'm trying to visualize a scenario where it would drop to that 2% within two weeks. If we are, if the board wants to make an amendment to that, of course, you have the right to do so. It feels like that is a steep climb, to be very honest with what's going on at Dwellow.
Yeah. So this is Jason, if I may. Two weeks, month, I'm not like going to lose sleep, because if you wrangle contact tracing and quarantine appropriately against a change and shore up the gap that we're seeing, you've effectively slowed your spread. We saw that when we did it in Wentzville Middle. We saw that in instances where contact tracing was not delayed. And so if it's an amendment, so be it, where your flexibility to drive. If we figure out who should be quarantined and then write quarantine based upon the interviews, your spread will stop. And I think I heard in a private conversation, like deep cleaning, obviously, you know, Friday over the weekend, Saturday, no needs to be done, et cetera. But then two weeks a month, I think, I think you should look at releasing that requirement based upon when you get a hold of contact tracing and figure your problem statement out. I, that's why I'm not hell-bent on two or four weeks, because I think once you get your handle on that, we'll come back and say, okay, I guess, you know, we're in a spot that way, I understand. Because that number, 5%, 6%, becomes really irrelevant if you're not growing, because it becomes they've been positive, they recover, they should come off that list. That lowers the number, you know, regardless. They're not, you know, 40 kids, 50 kids that are positive for the next 30 days.
Yeah, that's a good call. Dr. Lebratt, did you have a comment? Oh, did we lose her?
Yeah, so do I need, I mean, I'm fine with an amendment, but to me, it should create flexibility for us to not require this post-understanding.
Sure.
When we've got a handle on it.
At this point, since this is our initial encounter with needing to mask a building and the recommendation is 30 days, we also know that Delta is much more transmissible in children than Alpha. And we're also trying to ensure that we're keeping students in classrooms. We do expect the positive numbers and the quarantine numbers to climb significantly before they fall. There's still probably a week's worth of students who need to be addressed through tracing, or they may become positive at some point in time. They may even become positive 10 days from now. And so I think it's important to make sure we have enough time and space. And I think that's why the recommendation was 30 days, based on conversations that I've had prior and understanding and studying the transmissibility of the Delta variant.
I think that's fair, Dr. Lebratt.
Director Garber, do you want to try again?
So I have a question about the variant. Now, obviously, it sounds like you're at least getting symptoms, so you know exactly what they are, I would think. What are they? What are the symptoms of the variant?
Dr. Lebratt.
So we have children who are symptomatic. We also have children who have been exposed and their parents have tested them prior to the contact tracing being concluded, just to check. And some asymptomatic students are positive as well. They have very similar symptoms as the Alpha variant did, but it's just much, much more contagious. It affects children more drastically than the Alpha variant did. That's what's been shared with us at this point, but I do believe the symptoms are very similar.
All right.
So we are told that the variant is more contagious. But what I'm hearing is that it is not more dangerous than the COVID. So are we having, so if it's not more dangerous like the COVID that we've been hearing from other people, then quarantine stays the same as the COVID? So if you're sick, I have a friend of mine who, I don't know what they had, they were sick two days. They were, I guess they were told that they had COVID, but I don't know of anybody that has ever said they had COVID and they were only sick two days.
Dr. Lebratt.
So.
We do know that symptoms develop more rapidly with Delta. Additionally, as the science has been studied more and more, we've seen adaptations made to the quarantine period, which is when we saw shortened quarantine come into effect. So we, they now know that typically the symptoms are going to come on quicker, you're going to know faster. And as long as you're asymptomatic after day 10, you can return to the classroom instead of after 14 days. Additionally, if you have a negative test on day five, six, or seven, you can return without symptoms on day eight. So they are trying to make adjustments and adaptations for people who are not symptomatic and have negative tests in order to get people back to their normal lives as quickly as possible, in the safest way possible. So definitely taking those shortened quarantines into consideration. We're taking every opportunity we can to shorten quarantines or modify or use the close contact exemptions with masking, and also get kids back in quicker with negative testing or no symptoms.
So would you say that if you're going to mask up Dwellow, which is what you're trying, we're trying to have a conversation about, right? So how would that affect, I mean, other people in other school districts, they may live right next door to each other, depending on where the boundaries are. So is the ultimate to try to mask up everybody?
No, I think, and for me, I'm speaking for me, but the goal is to keep kids in school, right? And so these are the rules. What we see on the screen, these are the rules before us today. And if those rules change, then we can look at doing something different. But right now, these are the rules before us. And so kids being masked within three to six feet, they are not quarantined, even if they come into close contact. So we're trying to keep the most kids in school as possible.
I understand that. I understand that. But what you're saying is that are you saying, Ms. LeBratt, that the variant is worse than COVID? Or are we having symptoms more like when people get a 24-hour virus? And yet we're going to keep them out, what, seven to eight days at the maximum?
I just want to make sure we're discussing the topic at hand. So we have a motion and a second on the table, and we're not really discussing the, the different variant. We're really just trying to discuss what we're going to do with Dwellow as it relates to masking.
Well, don't you have to know the whole story before you take a vote? I mean, I feel like I have to know a little bit, a lot more about. What do we, what do we?
It doesn't change rules. I mean, whether we, whether one's more contagious or whether one performs different than the other, it doesn't change the rules that are before us. So these are the rules that we have. We can mask kids. We can shut the building down, or we can continue as we are, and that's not working for us. So I think there's a motion on the table to do the masks for 30 days and hopefully mitigate and let that calm down in that building. Is there any other discussion as it relates to the motion on the table before we vote? All right. Kathy, can we do a roll call vote on this one as well?
Yes. If you're ready, Director Goodson?
Aye.
Vice President Bryce?
Aye.
Director Abbott?
Aye.
President Bates?
Aye.
Director Garber?
Nay.
Director Stoli?
Nay.
Secretary Shaper?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. So the last piece we had, Dr. Kane, was even if it's just in the interim until we get a chance to meet again, is there someone interested in making a motion that if positivity goes above 2%, administration has the ability to invoke masks in that particular building?
I will make a motion to allow administration to invoke masking if a building rates 2% positivity or greater.
Is there a second? I'll second for conversation. Any discussion? So what I just want to say, as I understand it and what Director Goodson was saying, that really, we're just kind of doing this as a stopgap in the interim until we have a chance to meet next Thursday. So we can definitely look at revisiting this, but really, just in case one of these other buildings blows up very quickly, we don't have to come back and meet again. So really, that's all we're looking to do with this, is, is just a stopgap until we can meet next Thursday and discuss further. Yeah, Dr. Kane?
We have no idea of the impact of Labor Day, for example, right? There, there are a number of factors that we have no idea over. So we're just trying to provide some protection to get us to the next board meeting, if in fact it were needed.
Any other discussion or questions?
If, if, if it's to the next board meeting, do we need an amendment on that motion?
Yeah, you can make a friendly amendment if you'd like.
I, I don't, I don't want to amend her motion, but that's the intent.
Can you repeat the motion, Kathy, and we can add the...
Yes, I can. Director Abbott made a motion that the Wentzville School District can invoke masking in school buildings above 2% or greater.
Do we want to say the board will re, I don't know, something about revisiting it, you know, at the next regularly scheduled board meeting? And for the date? To be revisited at the next regularly scheduled board meeting on September, and I don't have my calendar in front of me.
I have a question about that, because that's on a Thursday. Would it be better to do it through the end of the week instead of stopping at the end of the week? Or, I mean, almost the end of the week?
Yeah, that's fine. To be revisited at the next, but I don't know how you want to word that, Erin. If we're going to revisit it, but it's going to go through the 17th?
I think just whatever motion we would make in the next meeting would have to be clear, the effective date is that following Monday.
I agree, that's good.
Or you could just say that, to be revisited at the next regularly scheduled board meeting and effective through 9/17.
That's true.
Okay, perfect. Director Shaper, did you have a question?
Yes, if I could please. So do we have the 2% threshold?
That's the motion on the table. So we don't have other buildings at that threshold yet, but just in case one of those orange buildings escalates in the next week, it gives administration the ability to, to mask that building until we have a chance to discuss further next week at our meeting.
So my question is, we're at 5% on Dwellow. And we called this meeting to make this move on Dwellow at 5, which would have put Dwellow 10 days ago if we was at the 2%. Now, I'm not saying, I, I guess my question, are we in Dwellow, I mean, the others are at one? I guess my question is, explain the number to me a little bit of the 2%.
Dr. LeBratt?
Thank you, Dr. Eric, thank you, Director Shaper. Yes, so Dwellow, and we have to keep in mind that the numbers as presented versus what we know is coming, sometimes, again, there's a little bit of a lag. But Dwellow, when we, it started first getting on our radar, was in the high 3% right at four. And so by the time it took two days to get a meeting in place, Dwellow rose from 4% to 6.99%. So we know how quickly it can rise. Additionally, you've seen Green Tree take off quite quickly, and you see how quickly Dwellow kind of moved through the ranks. And I've projected that up there for you so that you could see. So the intent would be to use this as a mitigative measure, because we don't want any other building to get into the situation that Dwellow's in. We don't want hundreds of kids to miss school. We don't want 50 kids to be homesick also with their families. And so if it's, it's truly a mitigative measure, we need to put it in place prior to the house of cards falling. And that's why we would recommend at 2%. So that we can get ahead of the game and prevent other, other buildings from getting to five, where students wouldn't be able to be in session.
Back to me, if I could, President Bates?
Sure.
My question, does this then apply then for the contact tracing beginning as of this date today?
As I under, and Dr. LeBratt?
As far as the to, to maintain the, the attendance.
Yeah, I think they have to do some work in order to begin that, right? It'll probably be at least a few days to, to start to spin that up.
It, it will take time to spin it up. You're absolutely right. But I think what Director Shaper is asking is the mask-to-mask transmission or the mask-to-mask modifications, and if those would apply. And those actually already apply for students who are masked. So if you do have two students in a classroom who are masked, the close contact exemption and the modified quarantine are already applying to them. Unfortunately, and sometimes we're seeing that on the bus as well, but unfortunately, because we don't have a large number of students who are wearing masks at this point in time, we don't have a lot of close contact exemptions or modified quarantines. So if we were to impose a mask mandate at 5% at Dwellow and watch these other buildings at 2%, if we were to see those numbers tick up, students were to put on masks at 2%, we would have a much better chance at keeping our students in school as the virus is upticking. That would prevent all of those students from being identified as close contacts because they were in fact masked at the time where the transmission was the highest. And, and again, that is, that is retroactive. We've been doing the, the close contact exemption and the modified quarantine since day one.
Director Stoli, did you have a comment or question?
I do. Thank you, President Bates. I don't know necessarily who would be the correct cabinet member to the, to direct this question to, but on any given day in the fall or winter months, what would the average percentage of absenteeism be for students?
There's definite variation in, in what that answer is going to be from elementary to middle to high school. Our attendance has historically always been higher in our elementaries and always lowest in our high schools. And actually, in high schools, the longer students in high school, you see, for a variety of reasons, attendance begin to fall off. So it could be anywhere from the up, upper 90s to, to be honest, in some high schools, it could be in the upper 80s.
Dr. LeBratt?
That, that question also brings back something else that makes me think that in addition to what the attendance percentage is, Director Stoli, also how many kids would be out due to quarantine. So even if we had 5% of our students who were positive, say we've got 46 students who are positive right now, that's at 6.99%. Those students would probably have five to 12 contacts each, and those students would also be absent. So that would, you know, multiply by eight to tenfold, for example. And so that would affect the attendance drastically if they were to be able to qualify for the modified quarantine. So not just the positives, but also those close contacts.
Director Stoli?
So, thank you, President Bates. I just wanted to clarify my question. So I'm asking, pre-COVID, what is the average absenteeism percentage for buildings? Whether, I mean, since we're discussing elementary buildings or buildings in general, is 5% of the student body missing in the fall and winter months where viruses are running rampant? That's, that's what I'm trying to drill down to.
Dr. LeBratt?
Based on my experience in both middle and high schools, I would say in the fall and winter, when your viruses are rampant, probably a little bit lower than 95% for a middle or high school, but higher than that when it's not respiratory season. And then elementary is always higher than middle and high school, of course. And I think many of our buildings post their daily attendance through their bulletins as well.
All right. Any other question or comment before we vote on this motion? Kathy, can you read that to us one more time? So I know we amended that.
Yes, President Bates, thank you. Director Abbott made a motion to invoke masks in buildings that are above 2%, excuse me, that are at 2% or greater to be revisited at the next regularly scheduled board meeting, effective through September 17.
Okay. Can we do? Go ahead.
Yeah, just one, just President Bates, if I may, just one real quick point. I mean, I, I think the states and county are around five with this number. I, I recognize that this contact tracing has created this, and that's why, you know, Dr. Kane, you're looking for, for some flexibility here because of this lag and what we're seeing is, is a likelihood here. And so getting out ahead of that. So I certainly support that. I think it'd be interesting as we revisit Thursday, you know, what is the right percentage, 2, 3, 4, you know, given those factors? As we think about maybe, maybe a go-forward policy, you know? I respect where, where we stand, given those lags that we're seeing and how significant they've been and how quickly is, as you, you know, is so evident right here with Dwellow has been. So just as we think about Thursday, you know, that percentage, 2, 3, 4, I think if we pivot with contact tracing and get a handle on this differently, I think that probably warrants some other percentage or some other discussion. So just a point ahead.
President Bates?
Sorry, Director Garber? Director Abbott, you want to go ahead? We'll see if we can't catch her in a second.
I would like to say that moving forward for that discussion next week, if the administration could cooperate and have conversations with the county health department to look at those percentages, I think that that would be very wise.
Director Garber, you want to try again? Get your hand.
Yes. So should I assume at this time then that you're going to be having conversations with the county, the St. Charles County Health Department? They are the source of the information. It's the school district that is the source of the information first before it goes to, the information goes to the St. Charles County Health Department. So if we're going to ask people to mask up tomorrow, how come we can't, how come we can't start the preliminaries of notifying the parents ahead of time? Rather than going on to St. Charles County, who's obviously overwhelmed? Just to understand, can't make?
I'll just say that I think...
For parents at least, like then, as soon as we realize we have someone that needs to be quarantined.
Dr. Kane, you were going to speak. Did you, she cut out. I couldn't really catch most of that. You're on mute.
And I'm not sure I caught all of Director Garber. I'm not sure.
No, you're good.
I caught all of Director Garber's comments as it relates. I, I think there was something related to parents. I will say this, though. We want to utilize the resources that we do have available to us. For example, the county health department has an epidemiologist that can serve as a resource for us just with the conversation, as Director Abbott and others have mentioned, just in terms of what the cut ultimately looks like, as Director Goodson said, kind of moving forward. And so we want to absolutely tap into those resources so they can help provide some medical guidance to what we're ultimately looking to do moving forward with this.
And I understand that, Dr. Kane. But the fact of the matter is, you want, you want to mask up effective tomorrow at Dwellow. And so in the meantime, we will, we will have, if there's anyone else that is considered at risk, we will know that tomorrow. Why do we have to wait to contact a parent? This is, this is one of the things I don't understand. And, and is, and aren't we talking about the delay between the school and the St. Charles County Health Department? Aren't we talking about the delay that has caused the numbers to go up a little quicker than we thought? So why are we going to wait till Monday or Tuesday, or even the, whenever you make connection with the county department? We are, we are the source of the information for St. Charles County. We're the source.
I think the delay was there because we weren't helping them, and then we just made the motion to help them. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you voted against that. So I think that's what we're trying to move to.
We are the source of the information to begin with.
Okay, but we've, we've, we've moved on from that conversation. So the mo, the motion on the table now...
Comes from our school district first. And then it goes, they all then.
The motion on the table now is to give administration the ability to put masks if we have other schools that go above 2%. So is there other comment related to that motion? Secretary Shaper, did you have something? You had your hand up. Go ahead, Secretary Shaper.
Yes, President Bates, thank you. My question was, do we have amendment? You said something about an amendment to this. Are we voting on an amendment first, or was that corrected?
It was a...
Within the original motion?
It was a friendly amendment, just to give it an effective date through the end of next week. Yeah. Okay. Are we ready for a roll call vote? All right, Kathy, if you will.
Thank you, President Bates. Director Goodson?
Aye.
Vice President Bryce?
Aye.
Director Abbott?
Aye.
President Bates?
Aye.
Director Garber?
Nay.
Nay.
Director Stoli?
Nay.
Secretary Shaper?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we need a motion to adjourn? We have a second?
Second.
Dr. Kane, did you have something before we adjourn?
And I apologize, board, I just want to say this. There was a comment earlier that was made about deep cleaning, and I just want you to know that we've already begun that process, especially in buildings. That's already occurred this week, especially in buildings where we're seeing some of the peak. We'll have additional conversations as we're tracking the colors, literally looking at orange and yellow. If we see a space or a specific building where we need to do more as it relates to deep cleaning, we'll go back to that.
All right. All of those in favor? Director Garber, do you have something?
Yes, relative to the cleaning that you're talking about, and listening to what Dr. Hector had to say earlier, are we sure we're going to get the cleaning? Because nobody wants to come to work yet. So what's the, I mean, I don't understand why we're acting like that's something new. It's not. We had the same level last year, and we're still having it. And it's not just the school district either. Thank you. I have to go to another meeting.
So all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Aye.